September twenty eighth. This is the emergency meeting that talked about the violation of the budget authority not being used to the extent of the seventy one thousand dollars and also the street allocations not being used. So we had this meeting and took care of that and suggested maybe two thousand transfer that was approved at that time when that was done. So this is that. The second item on that is through police officer discussion which was approving a twenty six hours an hour for a part-time officer so that possibly we could get Mark Crevel to come, which by the way he's just led me to this. No disagreement with that one. We have a motion.
I make motion to approve that special council meeting.
Motion by Bob.
Our second.
By Isla. Roll call both James.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Isla.
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
Okay. Now. So. So the next thing up on the agenda is the Cedar Knox public power. We have a couple of guests here, Tim Lowberg and Corey Fisher, and they want to talk, I believe mostly about the easements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you need a microphone, we have one.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmen and citizens of Crofton. We're here tonight to talk about utility easements and building permits within the city of Crofton. My name is Tim Lowberg along with me is Corey Fisher and Board Representative Terry Thunkert and Nick Stiles, great leading communication is also here. We're here today to answer any questions about utility easements and building permits to help you understand the need for them for all utilities, power, phone, water, sewer, gas and others. Both are important to maintain safe, reliable, affordable power to our customers in Crofton. What is an easement? An easement is a place to build or bury lines to serve our customers and accessibility to maintain utilities. Just a question for you council members to think about as I go through this. What is important to the city to be able to maintain your city utilities? If access is denied or utilities are covered when easements are violated or compromised? Say your water lines, somebody builds, pours concrete over them, encroaches the easement of the building. What is a building permit? Building permit allows us as utilities to see hazards such as clearance issues to overhead and underground utilities and that access is not compromised to serve in ordinance that are being followed. We want to keep things safe. We want to provide safe electrical service. We need proper clearance from structures and trees to be in accordance with the National Electric Safety Code. Without easements and building permits, there are safety and financial concerns. Structures will violate the N E S C clearances and will have to rebuild to meet codes that customers and expenses. If easements are encroached, there is nowhere to rebuild without spending costs or ratepayers. Without easements to maintain lines and trees, we are faced with customer safety and liability if someone coming in contact. The lines right now are city-owned infrastructure and if we don't have easement to get to our utilities, say buildings, trees, fences, things like that, we pose the risk and so does the city if a kid climbs a tree and we become electrocuted or something. So it's very important for safety reasons that we are able to access, maintain access to our lines. That's why we want to keep, see easements and L A rightaways stay open for access. Along with structures and trees, fences, playground equipment, sheds, old vehicles, firewood, et cetera, all can be hazards near or top of our electrical facilities. We want to be reliable. It's important to keep the L A easement right away clear to access to facilities. Our routine maintenance, we are able to plan around, schedule around weather, have people move things, but in the event of an outage, lot of snow, we are faced with problems to where we can't get to our lines. North of the pool is a good instance. We have overhead power lines going through the middle of that with utility sheds back to back. They're portable, but they are encroaching easement. They probably didn't need a building permit. But in that fact, the line goes down in the middle of a storm, we have torrential rainfall, the only way we can get to that line is to find alternate route or come down our easement and around each shed which will leave tracks in people's yards, ruin their sprinkler system, things like that, which prolongs the length of the outage and our only alternative in this case would be to move. We are looking very underground because we are faced with this problem, still we have to get to those utilities. We can't drive between houses. We have twenty ton trucks, blow somebody's basement in, again yard damage, sprinkler damage, things like that. If we move the underground to the front like they have in the new addition, that cost comes to us and all the ratepayers and the homeowners because those utilities, we would bury along the street, it poses an eyesore to the community and the homeowners. The homeowners are going to have to rebury the secondary and bury their house. So there's a lot of problems that are stemmed for reliability reasons of being able to get to our lines and having to move them for cost for Cedar Knox, the citizens of Crofton and then again the homeowners. We want, like I said before, we want to keep things affordable. Relocating lines, right now Cedar Knox has one of the lowest rates in the state of Nebraska. On the average, we're right there. Relocating expenses and property damage all get passed along and eventually show up at rates. The easements, they're just a good thing. We got to have access to get to our line. Like I mentioned before, the infrastructure belongs to the city. We lease it, but if somebody's out of power and it takes four to five hours to get them back on when it should be a half hour, hour job, it's going to be problems and you know, at that point, if the easements are closed down, what's going to be the process? Is the city going to contact somebody to move something that allows us to get in in the middle of the night? I guess in overview of this, Wendell's not here tonight, but historically in the past, Crofton's mayor and council have been willing to improve the easement process in building permits. So we would ask that you take a good look at this. I know we've had some issues with fencing and things like that, but we'd like the city of Crofton to keep building permits and honor the utility easements. Larry?
All right. You're having a problem basically north of the swimming pool because the old part of the town got alleys and also most everything is substantial in here. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And over, over to the east at Sunrise is another problem.
Correct.
Well, along Sharon Street, they're building houses along there facing the north, correct? You know, along that road there and there's lots on the back. My question is, how much area do you need if we set it that behind what's, I'll just pick John Connick where he lives, on the backside, there's got to be a, kind of like an alleyway to take care of the new project homes that they're thinking about building on the other side of that south of John Connick.
I'm unfamiliar with that unless.
Well, I know, but you know, what, what for, what for room do you need if we have to set up a?
I guess just based on living in Hardington, L A, property owner owns a hundred and fifty foot, actual is a hundred and forty-two. Eight foot of that is a year and a half of the elderly neighbors, so it's sixteen foot wide alley, it's alley and utility easement. So sixteen foot would be my answer.
There's probably going to be houses being built along that tree line of the football field on the north side. There's a set up lots that somebody could build them. We don't know if they are, but we got to be prepared and let you guys know so that lot's got to be either cut down or something to get you guys through there on the backside of that house.
I think there's already.
That easement, sorry. You got that easement, sorry, in fact.
Are you talking on that three phase?
Yeah.
Along the school.
John Connick and the chapel.
I don't know where John Connick is. Is that the?
They were building a house.
Okay, yep. On the side.
Back side. On the south side.
So we have the three phase that feeds the school and then we got the trees, that whole thing's filled with trees all the way back through there. So we technically can't get through the trees, you know, unless you.
So I realize that. Between the two spots, we're going to have to make some kind of a, I'll call it an alley or a rightaway or something there. That your utilities will have to go there to service the other houses on the other side if they do it someday.
Yep.
You know, and even that new development that we got going out there, we're going to have to lay out because we've got a row of houses right next to Sharon Street and ones on the next side, we're going to have to make room for utilities and you know.
So on Sharon Street, we already made the provisions on that for Cedar Knox, our Great Plains, I think they're in the backside.
Yep.
We went on the front side of that because we noticed what we're having problems with. So all the transformers and everything are all set up on, just on the inside of the sidewalk.
Right.
I think that's on the inside and that goes all the way along Sharon Street. And then we run secondaries across to the north side and we got posts there to feed the north side of the houses.
But you can feed off of where you just said, to the, to the south on the next line of houses if they go in?
Uh, just as long as you're just right off Sharon Street, all the way, both sides, north and south. But if you're on the backside of Sharon Street down farther, I think could be another row of houses down by the school a little bit, there we got to make provisions and figure that out if you're talking about that. He just showed me the easement.
It's ten foot.
On somewhere outside of the lots, con, for instance.
Pretty minimal. I mean, if we, it's kind of an underground world now in the new additions, but if you get truck access, ten foot is pretty.
But I think the people that own their lots are going to have to be aware of that we're going to have to either shorten up their lot or something so we can run utilities through there. Am I right?
Each of them, each of, excuse me if I want to speak, each of them that I'm working have a.
They're already.
Flat map that tells them exactly what they have.
So, so we have primary already buried there. And we already have our underground transformer vaults sitting there, some, a couple of them have security lights on them and the rest are not developed yet. They don't have a transformer sitting there.
Right.
Because we don't know how big the houses are going.
Right.
But that goes east and west along that whole street.
Right.
So that's already in there. And then the city already got the easement when you guys did Sharon Street, your engineer went ahead and got the easement. So the utility easement is already there for the home company and you guys hold the easement.
So everything that you guys are putting in is going to be basically ninety percent underground now or?
Well, when you go on those other streets up there, or we're talking on the north of the pool, some of them we can't even drive down with a pickup and get in there because of trees, you can't even get a pickup down that utility easement. So basically, how do you get in there to cut the trees along that power line right now? And then if we go and put underground there, how do you get to the underground transformer?
Yeah.
And then.
We still got to get equipment back there. We'll bore the lines, but we still got to get transformer back there.
It'd probably be a skid steer versus. They're trying to be able to get back there and service some of the house.
Correct. So if you have the easement there, on both sides, there are one side of the line, I don't know what side the pole is on, and then all of a sudden these utility sheds are there and you got eight or ten foot easement, you have to go around that utility shed. You just got done going outside of your easement boundary and now you're on private property basically.
Right, right.
That has no easement. So you really need an easement to get to the easement is what the problem certainly comes with, so.
So I don't know, I don't think you guys were around here when we developed that out north of town. Molly, was you here?
Uh, I did when Sharon Street and L W was there.
No, I mean before, at Wyoming Street and that one's closer to the pool, when they started developing that, I don't think you guys.
No, I wasn't here then.
So we got to be more proactive on what we, what we're doing here now because I know what existing is, how can we fix it?
Yeah. That was probably what you're referring to earlier, when the N P P D had to contract with the town. And again, like Corey said, the easement are not Cedar Knox, it's not N P P D, it's long city of Crofton, so.
So the easements are there, we just need to clean them out. Is that a clear statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Storage units are the real issue, right? Because they're, they're mobile in theory, right?
They probably don't require building permits, but they are encroaching easement because like you said, they're not from construction.
Unless they have cement, no, then you got to.
Then, then you need a building.
I mean, I just want to ask you that, you don't need a building permit, but you got a tree, you got to have a building permit.
Correct.
And if you're running underneath the power line, it's more trouble, it's more of a tree than this.
Well, I've done that myself. I've cut a tree, there's sticks on, sticks thirty foot in the air and I drop them to look up there, guessing pace.
Yeah.
Make sure it's gone a little harder. Our concern is serving the people, keeping the lights on in a storm.
With safety.
Yeah, and safety. It's first and foremost.
We don't want the lottery match and we got power outage and we got to drive across my property and we have words outside, you know, we're supposed to be, you guys are supposed to be getting power back on. I don't want to have that happen either.
Correct. And we just kind of had that, here's the last time I was on call, we had a tree go through the line and that ripped four spans down, ripped the secondaries apart. Well, you can't go down the easement, so you have to back between the houses and then you just had to back go across and you had to try to get permission from everybody and luckily everybody gave us permission to go back through there and stuff. People are a lot more forgiving than we're about.
Yeah. How many people are we looking at north of town at, that, that property and the stuff in our lines and how many people out here that have done things? Is there a number of guys that are, not the whole development, is it?
You're talking to Wyoming Street, Colorado Street, yeah, all the way up, there's fences all the way back through there and we can't even get somewhere bolted right now.
That's cool. Mike, you want to say something?
I have just a question. And I, I'm aware of this, I'm in the zoning industry, so I'm aware of the fact that there, what you're saying, and I think this needs to be hammer only, someone else, is that the city needs to be the one that clears those easements.
Correct. They are the city's easements.
And the city.
And we're going to have to get.
Prior to the easements.
Yep. Ours is not. Ours is not to the city, it's to N P P D. It clearly states in our statement, it's N P P D and then the phone company. I disagree with saying it's the city's easement because ours in our deed does not talk about the city of Crofton in any way, shape or form.
I'll have to check what your name is.
Laura Marshall. We're on Eastport, the Sunrise Division.
My understanding was that when N P P D sold to Cedar Knox, they turned over.
They basically turned them over to Cedar Knox.
They turned them over and they turned them.
There's nothing that says, there's nothing that says anything about the city of Crofton.
I'm not arguing that it may not say it, but their master's turnover was to the city from Cedar Knox, they turned over.
There's more research on that, you have to.
Yeah. So whether it's on all the deeds or not, that depends.
And to Larry's point of how many people have something in the easement.
Yeah, that may be a problem.
If you want to look, Larry, you can come to my backyard. Everybody has something in that easement.
Yes, absolutely. I have a question.
And because it splits most of our yards in half.
And we're not putting anybody out, it's just.
Yes, but, but yes, it splits our yards in half. I mean, that's the biggest.
I'd like to find just another way in behind you and that would solve some of that.
But even then, you still are going to be, where are you still be driving through my backyard?
But now.
Still there.
Yeah, yeah.
The easement's still there.
I'm not fighting that, but I'm saying for access to us is you have to go down.
Yeah, and we would have to go back into tramps and watch you get it off.
No, just tramp.
So basically that's a swamp back in there.
I understand.
About every other year, it freezes hard enough that we can get a truck back in there.
I understand, yep.
So when it comes time to a storm period, it's kind of hard to get a truck back in and tell you back across somebody's sprinklers and their lot to go back in.
Right.
Luckily, these guys are really nice with some.
That's what I'm saying, I'm hoping that we can find another way around somewhere where they didn't have to come.
Mike, I got a question.
Pretty epic.
Well, I, Larry Meyer is on the last flat street, okay? Is there enough room onto the, to the north of him that we can make?
There is.
A road to go around behind these people's homes?
It's been suggested, there is.
I mean, who owns that property? The city own that property on the other side?
No. David Trank owns it.
That's what?
David Trank owns it. That pasture's David Trank.
Well, at least we know who owns it now, maybe we can get a road.
But even then, the easement line is still through the middle of our yards. It's not in the back of it, of our lots, it's in the middle of it.
But that, that isn't, that's something you however knew when you bought the property.
I, I agree, but I'm also saying that it's, it, you know, it's awkward and it's difficult because they can't go down the easement, even if you cleared it out on our side, on our lot, nobody else is doing that, so.
Let's, let's, let's just go back. I think you got, I think Mr. State has a question.
Do, do the easements that we're talking about, do they prevent landowners from putting fences or encroachments on the property?
Yes, we will.
So you, could you give me a copy of that? I mean, because I haven't seen one that, that indicates that there, that you can't put a fence up on your property that type of stuff. I mean, it'd be, if someone were to do that, I understand if you get the property owners a financial responsibility to remove that if you needed to get there. But you're saying that it specifically says that your easement specifically say that they can't put a building or put a fence up?
That approach on easement.
If it's Cedar Knox, our easement state that. The city's easement, Dale Reesburg before, you know, before, I always had to go to Dale Reesburg and get over and that easement passed away. And he's the one that always looked up the easements and got them all for us. So he's the one that told us how much width on the easements we got. So we got eight foot or we got ten foot and then he's stated everything where I could build a line. I always had to go check that out. So basically, the city holds the city easements, which that would be, you know, recorded over Knox County, so.
Well, I understand what easements are and how much the width is, but also I know that with easements, you, you know, you're not taking the property away from the property owner, they still own the property.
Correct.
And the right to use the property, whether it's, you know, easements I've seen like particularly with agriculture, you can't, you know, there's some things that you can't put on over the easement or you have to make sure that they have access to the easement, but that doesn't prevent them from using the property. And that's what I'm saying is your, your easements, either one of your specifically prohibit the landowners from using the property.
The, what I pray is not using it for blocking.
Well, that's, I guess that would be the issue.
They don't give you access if you put the fence, like you said, they don't give you access down the easement.
But if you have a fence up, they can, it's their responsibility to give you access and their financial if they want to put up the fence.
Yeah. So yeah, it would be, you'd have to.
They're kicking around the possibility of fence that gates, it could be access.
Yeah, and then when we get gates, sometimes, you know, they, they sit there and they're frozen or something like that. Well, someone's out of power and just say you had a one customer or two customers, you know, happened to be on oxygen or something like that, we can't let that information out, how do you get back there to get that power back on, you know, during winter or something like that? So that turns into a huge liability for the city plus back that, so. So that's what we're kind of asking for is kind of keep the easement clean. Yep.
Need to get it all clarified and worked out.
So the remove, that question I was going to add. Removal of the trees is the landlord.
The keeping the easement clear is the landlord, is the owner of the property. Like, like, like Mike said, the property owner still owns that. The easement is the right to use it by the utility company to provide utilities to the people that live there. Does not give them ownership. You can own the, correct me if I'm wrong, my, my understanding is you can own the easement, you can't own the line. So just like out of Sharon Street, what we were talking about, those people own the property all the way back behind two of the entire, the last ten foot or whatever it is, is an easement that gives the utilities the right to put their utilities in there and they cannot block that because that affects other people in that block.
As you mentioned.
Is that, am I off base?
Well, how Hardington operates, I guess is, you're right, I own to the center of the alley. It is my property. I own a hundred and fifty foot, but I can only have a hundred and forty-two to build them. I can't put a fence in the middle of the alley. I can't put my shed in the alley. That is a utility easement.
Right. They have to have that.
But I own now, but the.
And you have to keep it up. It's just like the state highway, you have to keep your lawn up or your whatever between the curb and the sidewalk, but that's their easement.
No difference in the county road, county right away. I mean, that's kind of a utility easement. It's, you know, the farmers aren't allowed to take out the fence and farm with their son of a dude, is a right.
But they own it to the center of the road.
And they own it to the center of the same.
Same situation, you don't, that's to the center of the road, you own the easement.
Right. They lose that, it wasn't so hard. So let's say I lived in a north side town and they got a tree that, you know, before all this took place and it's right there in the middle, the proper thing to do is cut the tree down and make it so you can get in there anytime, correct?
I don't know if we have a lot of issues with trees in the.
Well, there's some buildings down there.
Yes, you know, but you put a tree thirty feet away and it's still going to grow on the line. That's, we need to trim.
If you're right there, if you're right there underneath the line, that would almost come down, right?
We work with all our customers, I mean, the set number of feet we cut back, we work with our customers, but if it's under the line, it should come down.
Because you can't get your truck in there, if the tree is just trimmed and tree is still there, you got to drive around a property, try the property.
And we want to avoid that because that's, that's going to cause problems, we're going to damage something.
Exactly, exactly. So.
So we're going to have, what we're saying is we've got to come up with a policy that tries to fix some of the problems we have, but primarily avoids any in the future. Got to, you know, if we can get that, that future taken care of in a.
In saying so.
Hard enough way.
In saying so, I mean, we need to keep the building permits open.
Oh, absolutely.
That way the utilities have the jurisdiction. We won't have accessibility or it's going to cause problems too many painting our lines.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
So what do we do with the existing places out here and over here? Whether we, we got to come up with some kind of a solution so we don't have a mess with lights go off and you guys can't get in there?
That's what we're talking about, is trying to get some policy that works with, and we can work with planning and zoning with the utility people and see, you know, where we can make some adjustments maybe and try to fix some of those things. Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions on move here? I do have a few other topics here. If you got a minute, I guess I was just going to talk about our highway toll project here, the Harold Street project. We're rebuilding this from step and service to one twenty-one junction. We're trying to get a little better highway clearance, there were some poles that were just a couple of feet off. We're looking for better clearance there. We're looking to improve the voltage in the north part of town by increasing the conductor size over here, you know, loose voltage, which was a concern on the north end of town. Some of the work we've done, we've added a couple of backbeats to where we can do this work keeping lawn or if we have storm situations where lines are down, this is allowing us to have some interstate backbeats to keep our people, people of Crofton on and we also with this line will have a better backbeat from our rural distribution lines. So looking to serve the people of Crofton better than that way as far as voltage and reliability. And this winter, we're looking to start doing, we replaced the view, but we're getting into the LED lighting in the past few years and this winter, we're looking to come in and spend a few days and change out all the lighting in the town of Crofton, the LED lighting. The rent of the LED light goes up a little bit, but the kilowatts used or wattage decreases. Just for example, if your hundred watt high broker's sodium lights on a corner would use a dollar ninety of energy and four fifteen rent, so six oh five and the LED lighting, which will put out a better light, it's brighter, it's wider, it's directional when you come It's brighter, it's wider, it's directional when you come into some of these towns, like Yankton has a big glow, all the lost lumens in the air, lost kilowatts. LED is more directional and shines to the ground, so, you know, we'll be able to offer that for five ninety-five. It's cheaper, so we're looking to start with Crofton as our first step in replacing the lights in town. And what it does for us, I guess, is less nuisances for city people to call in lights that are out, or maintenance guys, so.
We get someone's poles that don't have them now.
We can always add lights. Less, less maintenance for us, less trucks rolling, so it's, it's kind of a win-win for both of us. No other questions, that's all I have.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Nick, did you want to add something?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Well, we want to hear from you. You've asked, you've got.
You're just the I can't.
Okay, so we have, um, we'd like to hear from Michael Dunther. He's got something to talk to us about.
Uh, I got a redevelopment project, um, council members, mayor, citizens of Crofton. I'm here tonight to brief you on a, brief you all on an upcoming redevelopment project I've got going. I recently purchased the former Bover Steakhouse property from the Beckers. My plans are to redevelop the property into some, some sort of a, uh, business park consisting, consisting of three businesses. First one, um, looking at building a new, new shop from my existing auto repair business. I plan on putting a car wash up there, and there shouldn't be enough room for some large storage units. Um, this will give the area a improved curb appeal to the community and those passing through. I've been working and planning with the, working with the planning and zoning, getting all the necessary curbs and variances squared away and lined up for the project and the local bank, with some financing, and also been talking to Northeast Economic Development to see once what's available. I guess basically I'm here to ask for the city's support with the project and plans, I plan to use tax increment financing, which is what the gas station utilized when they redeveloped that, to, uh, make this become a reality. I'm excited to invest in the community, and I'm looking forward to building upon current business and adding valuable services to the area. I'm looking forward to hopefully working with the city to, through the TIP financing, you know, to make this redevelopment possible, so, in the early stages of it, but.
But he's already working with planning and zoning and those things are on the move, and then the, the tip, I understand, is fairly complicated. You've gotta have a lawyer, but.
I need to get a lawyer square with.
I was gonna say, but if you, maybe you can get all the way through that.
I got the same, the same, uh, Mike Bacon from, out of Daphenburg, who's like probably the tip lawyer in Nebraska.
Right.
I've spoke to him a few times. He's the one that did the gas station, so.
It's kind of a specialty, isn't it? So those guys kind of, they kind of know what they're doing, and that's about all they do.
If they've dealt with it a lot.
Well, I, I'm, I'm excited to see this happen, Michael, so, anything that, um, I can do.
If anyone's got any questions, or anything, let me know.
All right, yeah.
Keep pushing forward with it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so, um, then the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the claims, and I think you all take a good look at those. Um, I just, anybody have a question about anything?
The forty seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents from Katins, is that, uh, I looked in there and I, I think it was a, is it a rental or a skip order in there?
Yeah, we, we.
What, what did it cost for that fixing of that international log?
That's in there too. It's eighteen twenty-one.
I realize that. Well, I read, I mean, I think it was like eighteen hundred dollars, am I right?
So it said eighteen, eighteen twenty-one, yeah.
And how much did that, that skip order, was that twenty?
The lease is twenty-nine thirty-two. Yeah, they're both, twenty-nine thirty-two, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's like a year. That's yearly or fifty? It's a year.
I think it's a year.
Is that a year?
Larry, do you know if that's a year?
I can't remember what it is. They, they changed it last year, and went up a little bit.
Just one year, Bob can't remember.
One year, yeah.
Cool. And that's due?
We renew it every year.
I understand that. What month does it come due? This month for the first year or what?
Comes to September. One of these I would like to visit with you about because I want your input. The Crofton Community School is beneficiary of the fees for the liquor license. The, when you apply for a liquor license, um, when a business applies for a liquor license, they, there is a mandated fee from the state. And then that renewal every year is mandated, so, um, most of the bars, if they have, you know, like, the, well, all of our bars, it's right at the two hundred dollars, okay? Three hundred dollars, I'm sorry. If they have, um, a catering part of that, which the Legion does, because they do a lot of catering in our little, uh, area here, and they have, you know, parties and everything here, dances and so forth, and they do a lot with St. Rose. So they have that extended catering for you. Um, the Pumka and Steffens and Melissa Clark have a different license, which is packaged alcohol from local, and there's less, it's, I think that would be a part of it. Now, this is mandated by the state that that goes to the school. In the past, um, we've just written the checks with whatever came in, went to school. Well, in the process of renewing liquor licenses and or having a new one, like when the public tried to apply for theirs, et cetera, Steffens applied for a new one, so, so, indicating some research on our part in their office. And I see that there is a state mandated liquor license fee, and then there is a occupational tax. The occupational tax is for the city. So it went to our statutes, and our statutes say that the occupation tax can, um, match. At one time it was like a flat twenty dollars or whatever, but that statute's been upgraded. So it now matches whatever the state has, so. When Mr. Weeblehouse, for example, pays his, he paid six hundred dollars. He came in and paid his the other day, so he's paid two this fiscal year because he jumped the gun on it fiscal year, and he laughed and said, well, I'm ahead of time. So, um, so it occurs to me that we have, uh, if you know, there's twenty-three hundred dollars. This is the actual license, licensing, and then there's another twenty-three hundred that is the occupation tax. We don't have to give that to the schools. We, the city can use that, and I can find no limitations. Um, Mr. Stevens, if you have, know any knowledge of this, I'm open, but I can't find any limitations on what that can be spent. So it occurred to me that, uh, one of the things that this community absolutely loves are the receptions and the, the farmers' ball and the, all of this that happens in right back there. You know, they've got their own freezers or coolers and so forth, and a, a lot of, of the alcohol through catering comes right through that window. And on the east side of our building is a great big window that's about ready to fall out. And it's freezing in that room in the winter and hot in the summer. And it occurred to me that maybe we could take part of this twenty-three hundred dollars and do some work in this auditorium. And it would be a benefit to the city, to the whole bit. So I did a little shopping and did some pricing, and that window needs replaced. This window in here is another one that's cold and needs replaced. And the door needs to be workable so if there's fire in the kitchen, people can get out. The water heater's way out of date. We need to, I, I thought maybe we could look at, um, an on-demand that'll hang under the sink instead of that big thing sitting there and get a decent looking cabinet and thing. And for about twenty-two something, we can do that. So if the council has no objections, I don't know if we need to vote or not, but if you would like to consider that, um, that we would use that occupation tax for, and then the next time we could use it for something else. We could choose a project.
I would like to see somebody, contractor or plumber.
We don't need a contractor. We've got guys that can do it. That's why it's cheap.
So instead of water heater, you'd have a water, a water heater?
Yeah, they're about so big, they hang right under the sink.
We still have to have a price on material share. Again, that's what I mean. About is not an actual estimate from the lumberyard. I wanna see some.
Yes, it is. I'll give it to you. I've got.
That's what I'm asking. You don't see it, you say about this and about that.
But I just didn't.
More like to see, I would like to see.
Okay.
An estimate on a sheet of paper, black or white.
Okay. The question here is, can we invest that money back into our auditorium?
I think it's a good idea.
Any other comments? Do we need, let's take a vote. Let's just, something may.
I'll make a motion and put it back in the auditorium.
Motion by James.
I'll second it.
Second by I. Roll call vote, James?
Yep.
Larry?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, we'll get a couple of votes, or a couple of places.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll go to the lumberyard here, and, and the ones I looked at was at Menards, because I'd walk in and write it down. So.
Yeah, we can keep it here.
Yep, yep. I, I actually talked to Joanne about it, she didn't have time to look them up, so that's in process. So next thing is the.
You gotta put these ways.
Oh, yeah, we have to pay the claims, don't we? We need a motion then to pay the claims.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, to pay claims, motion by James, second by Larry, and roll call vote is Larry?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
And, um, James?
Yes.
Okay, um, the, um, what, what we're trying to do here, what you see on your agenda now, is coming right from our code book, and this, and, um, indicates that this is the order and the way that we should and could handle the, the, uh, meetings, so that's what we're trying to do. We don't have any reports from committees unless Michael wants to say anything.
I'm glad to, uh, give you a follow-up too about what's going on.
Okay.
Many of you have received communication regarding a public hearing at the L tomorrow night regarding the rezoning of several blocks on First Street from Iowa, Maine, and then on the west side of First Street, another block, it's in Nebraska. Um, the reason for that is that it's come to our attention as a planning and zoning commission that the people who live there cannot make alterations to their property if they wanted to tear some down, built house they couldn't, because that is owned presently as downtown commercial. And those limitations would not allow them to add on to their house, change, uh, demolish, rebuild, uh, unless it was a business. So what we've asked it to do is change the zoning in that area to, uh, residential transition, which allows those people to do reasonable things to their property, their houses, their, that is presently allowed because there's own downtown commercial. So to me, this was something that came to my attention as a result of an individual wanting to build a home in that area, and suddenly awareness came that that's probably not the best way to have that zone. Uh, so we're in the process of trying to see if that will float with the populace.
And that meeting was when? Did you say, tomorrow, that meeting was tomorrow, all night? Okay.
At, uh, September, right here.
Okay.
Okay. The notification's gone out, property owners affected, influenced, close by, within three hundred feet. So they've been notified. I believe also the council members have also received that information in their hand too. Okay, is that correct, huh?
No, they have not.
They have not?
We don't, planning's only will hold their public hearing tomorrow. And after we get input from the public, we will decide whether we're gonna move forward as is or make any changes to what we planned. And then if we don't, then we'll move forward, and there, then we'll go to the city council to review and have the rule over here.
Sure, and there has to be another public hearing, correct?
Yeah, the city council, I've had it going.
Okay.
Uh, was there a, any of this information sent to the council?
No.
Oh, that, Meyer, Meyer, sorry. Uh, that, that is the plan with public hearing tomorrow night.
Okay, and that, that'll come to the council after this public hearing, probably, and then.
We can't, we can't.
This happens, you, you can't, planning's only can't finalize anything to the council.
Right.
We're just gonna go.
But if you do want some information, I have, I have that information. See if you'd like to look at it.
Is it just one block or two blocks?
Uh, it's from Iowa.
Three blocks, three blocks, okay.
Yeah. Uh, and then one and a half of First Street from Maine to Nebraska. It's the west side.
Okay.
Of First Street, from Maine to Nebraska.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's First Street from Iowa to Maine.
Both sides, okay.
Cool. And I can imagine the frustration of Mike that existed in someone's heart if they decided they couldn't do anything with the property, which is what we're trying to resolve.
So that would open that up to, they could, they could build a new house, they could remodel, remodel their house, or they could put a business. It's transitional, so they could do either one, is that correct?
Businesses are permitted, residential permitted.
Okay.
Which also requires a public hearing, making it allowed.
So it doesn't take away our business district, it just allows it to do either?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, building permits, uh, several this month. Michael graciously applied, and, uh, there are a number of concerns regarding his application, which I think have resolution. But presently, uh, setbacks are gonna be a problem for him, so that will come again to the city council uh, to consider, or the board of adjustments to consider, the variance regarding some of the setbacks. And he will need also to file a condition, we use permit for, uh, the process, is it?
Does the builder permit to build a fence, to build a house, the same, same price?
Same.
Is it building permit to build like?
Same cost.
Same cost as a house?
Mm-hmm.
It depends on what city you're in.
Today, I didn't realize that.
Depends on what city you're in, what the code says.
So if you build, just for example, if you build a fence a size this big, or a house a size of this building, the same cost is building.
That's, that's what, what the, the latest fence that went up.
Right.
Said, it said, um, and this was the conversation. So, I need a building permit, yes. So it costs forty dollars, yes. So if I build a two hundred thousand dollar house, it'd be forty dollars, yes. Is that logical? Yes. Why is that logical? Cause it costs the same to file out the counter.
Is that what it is, basically? Okay.
It's the time involved in it, yes, the people, that's all we're charging for.
Okay, if you want to, we can make that money.
No, I didn't, didn't know the, the whole, I'm not sure, I didn't have an answer for it.
And I'm glad you asked. And I'm glad you asked it, and I'm glad that came up, because that's something that the public should know. It hasn't, we bear a cover cost.
Okay. Okay, that's what I didn't know, heard.
Uh, Mike also has applied for variance, which will come into play. Wendell Strong has a shed included in the backyard in proper setback and easement situation. So those basically are the items that have been, or disagree.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Okay, so then we'll move ahead with the unfinished business. Uh, we talked a bit about the recompensation of the ordinance and resolution book, and you have in your packet, I believe, a letter from Kyle Peterson, who has, uh, who said that, uh, basically, um, I think I meant to describe, but there's a basic code that's based on state code, because you can't change that anywhere. The League of Municipalities puts one out, and McNally also puts one out, there are the two in the state that are accepted as the code books. It's a base code that applies to any city. The League, um, charges six hundred dollars and you get six books. But then when you redo it, they recommend you do it every year, and then it's six hundred dollars every year. Or, we had ours done by Mr. McNally the last time, and that was clear back in oh nine or oh six, whatever it was. And that has lasted us, of course, all this time, but in the process, we need to have something that updates it even if you keep that original code book. And the state doesn't change a whole lot. So my opinion is it's kind of wasted six hundred dollars if you're doing the same things every year, and we can make it last longer as long as we have some way of keeping track for change. So anyway, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Peterson, um, said that he could do either one of those codes, just get the code. And then, and then we would give him our resolutions and our ordinances book. And then he would take those and add them and update the codes that's there. If you run through the League for that, was it forty-four dollars or twenty-two?
Twenty.
Twenty-two dollars a page. So that could get pretty costly. Now, Kyle suggested that we, he said that he'd worked at the state, uh, level, do, working with some of that, and he said, you can set up a way where every time, and I think Mike could chime in on this maybe as to its value, he said every time you do an ordinance, or every time you do a resolution, then that, he could just automatically bring that up to date. And if you look on the state statutes, you know, you keep running into that revised on so and so and so and so, so you know it's no good anymore. So what we have in our code book, of course, is we look up a code that's been revised and so forth, but it's not marked. So you don't know if it's effective or not. So, and, and, uh, Mr. Stevens has recommended that we do this, that needs to be done at some point. So this is something you'll want to take a look at, and I think that, um, I guess just look at what, what Kyle's put out, and you, I don't know where Mike went to. And see if you want him to get involved with it.
Right, and your financial share.
Right. Yep. So there, there it is in your, it's, um, oh, it's six fifty cost, it's with basic code, and then every month, every year you get that twenty-two dollars paid. So there, there's your logical, he said there's your three options. Just get the basic code for one year and have me prepare the custom ordinances. Number two is get the basic code for one year, have American Lego Publishers, which is the League, prepare the custom ordinances. Or do the basic code with annual updates and have them do it. So, um, probably cheapest is going to be get the code and have Kyle do the pages, but he can't give us a price until he kind of knows how much we have to do. And he told me that if we could get those to him so that he could work with them with word processing instead of PDFs and stuff that don't transfer as well, that he would, and I think Brooke could attest to that, that sometimes, if you, if, he was always saying, get it to me in words so we can work with this. So if we can get all of that worked out, um, I think that Kyle would be happy to work with us. So, do you have any comments or statements or anything else at the time, or suggestions? Or Mike, do you have anything to?
I think you've pretty well set out what your options are, I really don't think option three is, is workable. I think you either do, well, actually you have three options, one, two, or nothing. From that standpoint.
Yeah. Because that's putting a lot of money out for just repatting, taking copy work.
Yeah, it really is. And I guess, you know, my only feeling would be is that, uh, you know, you haven't had it done for, what'd you say? What's that, I mean, the front of your resolution here says two thousand one.
That's it, that's the last, so it's twenty years old.
Twenty years old, but on the other hand, a lot of the stuff doesn't change.
It's still okay, but we just need to.
And also, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not going to be, I think, handicapped if you don't do anything. At, at some point, I think, with all the things that have changed since two thousand one, from the standpoint of keep it up, I think at some point you're gonna want to bring it all up to date, so you know where you're at, so you have some place to go from that point on. You know, whether, whether it's now or some other time, I don't think it probably quite frankly makes a difference. If you, if there's an instance that comes up where there's a question as to what the law is, you know, that's easy to look down, you look on the internet and there it is. And there really is not that many times that we've had to use this, or we can't double check it pretty quickly. So it's, it's not a burning thing, but at some point I think you'll want to do it, but whether it's now or not, that's, that's really a judge.
So why don't we think about it?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that you have to do now about it.
But maybe get some more finalized figures, see whether we want that investment. Maybe we want to just get our ordinances and resolutions in a well-organized notebook where those are available. That, and we would, you know, we could get those to the council on the original code, and then that would help us with keeping up. Okay. In favor, it was a table that for now. So the, um, on the sewer update, there's not a whole lot going on, we're just kind of sitting. There's some questions about the type of land now, but there's still some possibility. But we're still looking for land, and there's no set site in that. Millers are looking at a couple of different pieces. It's almost like you're looking for the, just the perfect plateau, so you don't have a lot of work to do. But, but it is still being, being worked on. I don't even know if there, was there anything else that we had to, am I wrong on that? I don't think there was. Okay, the update on the speed sign, the, it's lying in there in front of the door to the police officer's office. And I put it there so we would see it every day, so it would remind us. Somewhere along the line, you know, there was this order, and then there was, where do we put it, and then who puts it up, and then there was this and that. So it has gotten all the way to Dean Swartz, who is, um, who told me that he was a crop tonight, that Bill Swartz's building was of that family, so a lot of you folks would know that, that lived here. So he's got some sentimental value that sound, or connections that sounded like. He is, uh, was a DOT and his office is in Newark, and he said, yeah, we could, we put it up, and yeah, this book, you have to have it for that. Did you know that? And I said, no, I didn't know that. So, so he sent the paperwork and we've shipped that off to him and so forth and so on. So as soon as it's something about the height of the letters for certain miles per hour, there's only three places you can put one, said we didn't have this information before apparently. So you can put it where the speed zone reduces coming into town, you can put it in the school zone, and you can put it in an area where the traffic has been proven to be excessive or exceeding, um, miles per hour. I think we're fine, he, he, he said he had to have an invoice that told him, told him exactly what the model was, he can approve it, get the permit out to us, and then the state will put it up. And he, he agrees that that east edge of town is where it's at. So that's in the works. With Casey's roofing, he said he was coming up to do some legal housework, and he was gonna try and get it in to that trip, so that would be advantageous to him as well. The police chief's contract, I think, um, the, we, we are in the process and, and Mike will be involved in that. I think the purpose there is to find out what the payback is, we all know the job we did not fulfill in three years. So the, the, uh, the meticulous looking through the books of what we paid and what he owes us back, and, and we'll get Mike involved in that. The Kirk and Michael, it's the same way, they have requested that we don't go, that we don't bring in lawyers, because we both know that if it becomes a court battle, that, um, we'll lose most of the money in lawyer fees, no offense. But, um, so the, the conversation right now has been, um, you know, yes, they got some work done, but no, we didn't get a product, and that's where, that's where it ended. As I said, it didn't matter how much you got done, we got no product because you quit. So that was the last piece of that.
Can you tell me, refresh my memory, how much we that was, how much do we, do you know about what we invested?
Hundred and...
Okay.
Twenty-seven or thirty-seven, something like that? Without.
Is this, is this gonna be something that's gonna drag on, or do we got a timeframe or a new this in?
Um, well, if, if, I would say now that, um, you know, since we've had that conversation, that, that if we can't come to an agreement, then we'll break our lawyers in. That would be my suggestion.
Do we give a timeline, Cheryl?
Yeah, I did, because.
What do you think?
I, well, I wanted to talk to, I wanted to talk to Mike and the Millers for one thing, and I got that done after that conversation. And to find out if there was absolutely anything that they could say that they got out of it.
Oh, I was gonna say.
See what, what.
Did they get anything? You're getting too far in case you have to, something.
Get into, yeah, okay.
Irrigation potential.
Yeah, we can't get.
Sorry, I'm tired.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
That's fine.
Yeah. So, um, the one and six. The one and six is in front of you. It is this piece, and this is the one we had the hearing on, remember, and I said, you didn't have the resolution letters? The one and six is, um, this will be for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two going forward. This thing doesn't change. And so, you know, this has been a frustration to me, and yet everybody just kind of says, yeah, well, these are the places that need fixed, we all know this. So I'm hoping that we can make some real progress here with, um, with getting some of these things done, and maybe some of the cor, the coring that's done will bring some of that to light. But we, we, um, there's a lot of things, and I gave you all, you know, my, our interpretation of all those terms, and we need to build a strip, we need to get, we need to get the material out here so the guys can do their job. But in the meantime, um, the, um, the one and six needs to have a hearing, and the only way, Mike, that I could figure how to do this is just to put our, can we put our meeting on hold and open a public hearing at this point?
Yeah, I think so.
So we're going to open a public hearing for the one and six, and say to the public, do you have any objections to this plan, or do you have any input to this plan? And then we can move forward with that resolution and get a bottom. So I'm going to open a public hearing at, um, seven forty-five. And it's for the consideration of the one and six plan, uh, for the fiscal year. On the back, it gives you the layout of those streets that specifically need some work done. And, um, the, um, there's, I know that some of them on the west bit, those two intersections, Steve's been out here, we talked about how we could put some tubes in there and get that water runoff and so forth, and most of that work our guys can do, so I'd, I'd like us to look seriously at those. So other than that, um, nothing, like I said, nothing's changed a whole lot. A lot of this is erosion control, and that's handled, because we have a lot of water in this town. So placement of tubes, you know, is a big deal. We cleaned one out, out there going out Second Street, we cleaned some of the ditches out, a lot of that's been helped. We've got that water diverted off the backside of Lulea. And so some of that's, and we opened up a path that goes down through the park. So we're kind of trying to work with some of that, and the guys can, can put that in their daily schedules. So I, the public is here, is there any input from the public, or anybody wants to say?
Has any, have you had any more thought about that street by, that, uh, walkway from the high school in the north? That kind of, people are, get someone a lot of light, don't bother me now.
Oh, um, yeah, and that would fit into this, there's, there has been, and that's to light up, it's not really a street.
Right, it's walked out.
But it's a walkway, and the, we've had several requests to get some light where that, um, with the sidewalk that covers the sewer system, the storm sewer comes down into the park. A lot of people walk through there, and then they walk up to their, to games and stuff, so that, they just want some lighting in there. And I was gonna, I, I'm gonna call those guys that were here tonight, because I was joking with them, that maybe we could get them to put some new lights on some. I don't know if there's any poles out there, or would have to put poles up.
Last time he sends them about four hundred bucks for a pole.
Corey just threw that at me out.
And said what?
If you go out in the country, it's about like four hundred bucks a pole.
Wow.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if Charlie goes in order or not.
Okay.
Just have to get one.
So, and, and although this, although the lighting goes with the streets, this particular thing doesn't include any lights at all. It's all upgrading and erosion and, and maintenance. So they're kind of giving you some estimates there. Comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So in your, in your plan, what if it does not become?
Uh, well, that's a good question, John, because when I first came on the council, I asked that question. So, you know, and they said, and they kind of just stretched it off and said, well, you know, it doesn't change, but that's okay. But I would like to see us change, I mean, I would like us to get something done, so we can write one of these off.
So they don't do anything, that's still the main thing?
Well, you, that's an interesting thing, because there's always the normal maintenance. We do that, there's always a few things that get done. I'm as frustrated about that as anybody.
So are we budgeting like, you know, seventy-five thousand, you know, simple, these transfers?
We budget, we, all of our money, um, all of the money that comes in has anything to do with car tax and then the highway allocations and all of that stuff, automatically goes to streets. So yes, there's that in the budget.
So if it doesn't, then it's still other years?
We're supposed to spend it. We were short spending it this year, so we were in violation. So, um, that's why, when the, um, when the budget came up, that's why we had that special meeting, so that we transferred. so that we transferred money from those funds into the Sharon Street so that we would legitimately spend the money we needed to spend because there's streets out there and it can pay for that bond.
So there's scheduled in the budget, and if they don't have it, then that budget, that amount of money gets lost?
No, it's not. We've always spent it up till this year. We, we were short, we were short fifty-five thousand this year. And, and part of that was the strip.
Even though that's the plan, if you don't do that plan, you can spend it somewhere else?
We're not spending, we're spending, still spending it on streets because we have to pay the street bond. Sharon Street Bond involves probably whatever that percentage was of streets. So we're, so what I, I verified with, of course, the street people have always said, well, you can spend it on Sharon Street. So what happens is when, this is, I should back up and say, the highway allocations, we get based upon the number of lane miles we have and the number of people in town. We get that payment every month. Okay? That is, that's our highway allocations for the state of Nebraska. At the end of the year, we have to take that amount and take that times twenty-five percent. We have to match it by that twenty-five percent, and then we have to spend all of it within that fiscal year. So that amount to, I hate to say off, off the top of my head, but a hundred and seven some thousand, I think. We spent, or maybe times thirty-seven, we spent ninety-eight, so we were fifty-five thousand. Now, where does that money come from that we match it with? We have to spend it on streets anyway. So it's things like when we pay for our motor vehicle tax at the county. It's when we, in our lost fund, which is our local option sales tax, when somebody buys a new car, we say that that local option one percent comes in and we say sixty percent goes to infrastructure, twenty to economic development, twenty to pool. But in fact, before any of those percentages come into view, there's a figure that says this is for highways because it's sales tax on a vehicle. So anything that has to do with a vehicle is reserved into and restricted to being used on the street. Now, what makes this so difficult, I think that our, that the council members felt this way at the very beginning since they came in was, you know, if we've got this money, why aren't our streets better where we're spending? There are a lot of costs that we expense to the streets. We expense, for example, the lighting. Every month we pay a pretty good chunk of the street lights that go along the highway. And, but repair is, of course, a big one. So we can, we can do major projects, we can do minor projects that will fix that maintenance. So we were short this year, like I said, primarily because it's not building the strip. So, and we can, and we have the vehicles that you can expense, et cetera. So one way to keep us, and what's the penalty for this? We say we can't do that? Well, the penalty is that next year we won't get that allocation. So if we wanna lose that hundred thousand dollars, we'll just go ahead and be in violation. The other thing was that we were in violation on the budget itself because we had not used taxpayers' money that we had asked for in the budget last year. So we were short on that by seventy-one thousand. We, I put it into the budget as being an expense for this twenty-one year, and the year wasn't finished. So it's still an estimate. So if, I can still put it in there. And finally, that in violation went off of the computer and said they would allow them to finish the budget. But that means it better be spent by the thirtieth of September. And I verified that with the budget office.
I'll go back to my first question.
Okay.
So next year, between October first of this year and September thirtieth of next year, we have two streets that are planned to get concrete created, storm sewer sidewalk, curbs, ramps, erosion control. They're two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If that does not get completed next year, then does that get pushed to the public yet?
I think you ought to make sure you understand is that, you know, what this, the purpose of this document is to make sure that there's a plan so that they, the community, the council looks ahead as to what they're having to do so that they don't all of a sudden have to come up, they got a big project and they haven't planned for it. So whenever you have one of these plans like this, it's really forcing the city to, you know, to plan ahead what it might be. Yeah, there's always situations where it comes up where the money needs to be allocated for some other reason because of a urgency or maybe the cost is so much. And so you can adjust the plan part of it. So it's not something that is budgetary where you have to do that. But this is, they're saying, well, in our budget plan, this is what we plan to do, and, and that's what you try to do. So if you have a situation that comes up where you need to adjust it, then you can.
Very well said. And, and the other thing is, remember it's a one and six. So any one of these projects could be at any time.
Or they could be moved up.
Yeah.
You could, you could adjust it whatever it is. It's just that they don't want to have this, it's like we do, we've got a big building, a church might have been involved in a church where they didn't plan ahead, and all of a sudden they got seventy-five thousand dollars and they gotta replace the roof and they hadn't been setting money aside or planning to do that. It's really trying to prevent any community from being caught in the same situation. So it's really a, a very helpful planning device.
Okay. And it's just my frustration that I don't say and complain it, you know?
And I would like to make a comment as far as the plan. Since we have two projects going on, the street boring project and the sewer project, why don't we wait? Do we remember that before we vote?
Absolutely. Well, Steve does this.
Steve Parton does this?
He just automatically does this.
Okay, I didn't know who did it, but this will have been, you're, obviously we're all aware that we got these two main projects.
Yeah, and this has to be filed right so that it's ready for this next fiscal year. And, and, and the fact that we have him makes this, and then they pay us, you know?
Cory.
That, it's all part of that allocation. So we get money.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep.
Okay. So then there's that resolution to, oh, another question. Any other question? I need to close that meeting. Yeah.
That intersection south of my place on Third Street, what do you intend to do with that?
Blow it up.
I don't believe it's on here. So, so...
It's the worst intersection in Crawford.
Well, we can, we can look at those individually as we go, Jerry, but the, the, what we need to look at tonight is this one and six and look at that specifically, and I don't believe that's on here. So maybe we can contact Mr. Parton if he wants to add that to his plan.
So if that isn't on there, can I ask why it's not on there when it's so evident by everybody it comes through that intersection?
Well, it was Mr. Parton himself that acknowledged the fact that that needed work. Right, when we were there the day he said that, well, Larry and I, that does need work. I don't know why it's not on here. I don't, I don't know. I don't think, because it's not here, I don't think it limits the potential for it to be.
Absolutely, and it doesn't, it doesn't limit our ability to work at it.
We talked about putting a storm sewer there at that intersection Jerry's talking about. And if we got up there Kelly Hodson's and used to be Larry Cook's place, maybe sticking another storm sewer there, some water coming from our going up by Steve Karasins would divert into that one and then everything else would kinda go down to before Jerry's place after that intersection. You talked about that with Steve Parton, remember?
Correct. And that's one of those streets that's probably got a lot of old infrastructure underneath it that when we get done with this coring, we might find that we wanna tear that whole street out.
Sure. And we, we understand that's gonna have to make a special figuring out how to do that whole street from up by Kelly Hodson's all the way down to Kelly.
And maybe that can be part of next year's.
But that would be a plan that we'd have to reconstruct that whole road.
Right. So, and that's why, that's why we paid Steve big bucks.
Well, I know you're not there, so you don't see this, but that street has so much water coming down up already by Kelly Hodson. All the water by Kelly's from the west side of the street, if we get any ready at all, it all switches over to the east side and then it comes down there. If we get a good heavy rain, that water will go out just about to the center of the street and it comes clear out. When I built my house originally, my garage, the foundation, the north side of my garage, which was original, had to be sixteen to eighteen inches above the center of the street. Well, we put oil over that so many times because of all the water that comes down here to try and make this work. If you take a little laser and stick it out on the center of the street right now, it shines up on my garage door four inches. So that tells me what kind of a problem we've got there, and I brought this up years back. Well, it's gonna get looked at next year, something's going to get done. How many years ago is told within two years there will be a storm sewer through there, nothing ever happens?
Well, we'll have Steve take a good look at that after the, after the coring is done. See what's under, see where we're doing.
There's, there's cars like you drive, if they come from the east and go west, they scrape the bumper on the west side of the street, both front and back, will scrape when they go through there. In fact, I seen a piece lay out in the street about a week, ten days ago that come off the bottom of the car when they went through that intersection. It laid there for a while and it come up missing. That's why I don't understand why that hasn't been added into this one and six year program.
Well, apparently the guys have talked to Steve and I've talked to Steve, so maybe he'll come up with something different next year. So we can, we can, you know, take a look at that this year and see what we can instigate and approve. So, okay, so if there's no other comments there, let's close the public hearing by motion probably. I did need to do that.
Make a motion?
Motion by James to close the hearing.
I'll sit.
Second by Bob. And then Larry?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
So then let's look at resolution ten four twenty-one, except that's gonna have, is that today? Yeah, we didn't do that. So it was introduced by, so who wants to be the introducer here? To adopt this resolution which says that they, that the superintendent has to prepare this one and six and we're gonna approve it. That's what this is about.
How long did you say resolution?
Okay, introduced by Bob. Seconded by Larry. And then the public meeting was held of, of course, the day of October. The resolution is that the plans and data as furnished are hereby and all things accepted and adopted, and the roll call would be for, Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
And so that we can send that in tomorrow. And that takes care of that. And let's go then directly to this, I, the very next thing, the resolution for the certification of the annual program. Now we have to skip back to this fiscal year. This is the one that's got Nebraska's logo at the top. And this is certification, we did in fact spend our money as intended. And let's see, we have a resolution signing municipal annual certification of program compliance. So this is gonna be resolution number ten four twenty-one and then parentheses two. This will be the second resolution. So this is, requires an annual certification program compliance. The state section thirty-nine twenty-one twenty also requires the annual certification by which municipality be signed by the mayor or the village board and shall include the resolution of the governing body. And so be it resolved that Mayor of Crofton is hereby authorized to sign municipal annual certification of program compliance adopted this fourth day of October twenty-twenty-one at Crofton, Nebraska. And then we'll list the board members' names, I think, is all that's necessary there. So, but we're gonna have to vote there as you see at the bottom. I want you before we vote to take a look at that certification because it's on the other page because that's what you are voting to certify. So it's in compliance with that state of Nebraska statutes. Now, when I first came on, Mr. Parton did this certification. He came out and went through the books. You go back in the time before he was our street superintendent, Chris Wortman would come in and go through and would, mostly verify if we spent that money proper or for street purposes. So they've developed, adopted and included in the records the plans and the programs. And we just did that with that street. Meets the plans and programs. It expands all tax revenues for highway road and so forth that's intended. Uses a system of revenue and cost accounting which clearly includes a comparison of receipts, et cetera, so we know what we're spending. Has a budget that we follow, uses an accounting system that's with an inventory of machinery, equipment, so forth, which we do, you've got your balance sheets and your assets, et cetera. A accounting system that tracks equipment, operation and cost. If you look at your restrictive streets account, there's all money in and money out. It's all accounted for. And has included in the public records information required on subsection two in that. Has included in its records a copy of this certification, resolution of the governing body authorizing the signing of this certification. And that's what I signed and sent to the Nebraska Department of Transit. They're the ones who certified that we have spent the money properly so that we continue to get those funds. So we would need a city council member, one of you, to move the adoption of said resolution.
I'll make a motion to move the adoption of said resolution.
Okay, so James makes the motion to the said resolution. Seconded by?
Elsman.
By Larry Price. And the roll call votes Isla?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
James?
Yep.
And Larry. So we have four yeses. Adopted and signed, and there we go. That one's done. So then the new business, I think we, the water rates, I'm not gonna introduce anything to you tonight. I wanna work with, we had, we have, with our League of Municipalities, there's a little extra membership fee that deals with the utilities and they have someone that's kind of an expert in that. One of the things that we're looking at in our water rates, of course, there's several things that we need to look at. Number one is that water is going to be exempt from sales tax. We've got this notification from the state.
For residents.
For residences only. If you are a business or if you have a business within your home and you don't have two separate meters, then you're still gonna pay sales tax. It's gonna make for some different kinds of accounting, and I imagine Eddie's gonna have to do some changing of his clerk book program because that's what we do our billing with. Now, he's been redoing that whole program that's installed that. We have met with him to find out if that's part of this. We need to go up, we need to probably go up on all rates. We also know that we need to go up on sewer rates because that's gonna help us pay for the new sewer expansion that we need. And we also know that as we set with a flat rate of thirty-two dollars a month, that that's probably not enough and it's also unfair because those people who use a thousand gallons pay the same as somebody with, that uses five or six thousand going through there. So every other city I've lived in, and I've lived in quite a few, has sewer rates that are based upon your water use. Now, we don't wanna catch those people that have underground sprinklers and run a lot of water out their yard, but it doesn't go through the house, so it doesn't go through the sewer system. So the utilities department with this membership thing, they have a plan, um, that takes the winter months so that you don't catch any of that, uh, outdoor watering. And work out an average and then set a rate that goes with that, and I'm gonna guess they're probably as experienced as anybody, so we'll get input from them on helping with that rate. But we've gotta consider the sales tax, we've gotta consider going up. The, um, garbage people are going up, um, the water rates are going up and what, uh, let's see, who else? Sewer doesn't, um, that's, so it's water, sewer, garbage. But the water and garbage are going up. So we'll need to, we'll put all that together, we'll try to get it out till you look at, so you can all look at it and put your input and stuff, but coming up very soon, and then the next month or two, we need to make that adjustment. Um, you have in front of you that, still that equipment purchase plan. One of the things that I wanted to point out was, um, that we are still in need of those, desperately in need of those tires for the, um, the, come to the word I'm looking for. The payload.
Truck and motor grader?
The truck, uh, the motor grader and the, and the truck. Um, the truck, we stole some tires off of, if I remember right, to fix some other stuff, and the, the payloaders got big splits. Tires are gonna be very hard to get. We have some, um, right now, our local ANDD is better than anybody that we've, uh, looked at, and for the pay, for the grader, we've got, he can put his hands on seven and he don't think there'll be any after that. We need six. So it's kind of.
What are the tires on again? The truck?
Well, we need one for the one dump truck, but we need the ones for the road grader, right?
And the road grader. So we just?
Is, is that right?
We need six for the, well, our proposed plan is six for, um, for one truck, and then we can shift those tires around. And we're also asking for six tires for the motor grader.
For the motor grader, because that's, and that's the one that, that Pink can get right now, right?
Yes, yep.
So there, that's in there, and he's about two, was it two hundred cheaper than over Hardington or something? Not quite.
I think it was just over two hundred dollars cheaper than Hardington, and that's installed.
So I would recommend that we get those ordered.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So how many tires do we have in this one?
Motor grader, the truck.
That truck that all.
We need to just shop and get them as fast as we can before they quit making them.
What was that there? For the road grader?
That sledge truck?
Not the sledge truck, the.
The dump truck.
The big dump truck, the new dump truck.
Dump truck, the old or the red and black one?
The new one, because we robbed those off that to go to pick those others that blew up.
Okay. You need more?
We're looking, we're looking at probably eight, ten tires. Twelve.
Twelve.
Quarter.
Yeah.
Twelve? And which prices are they on these sheets?
Uh-huh.
I mean, you got.
What we wanna do is take the, the, the tires that came on the, the newest International and move those over to the sledge truck because those tires are okay, but not the grader's.
Which tires are on this price sheet that we're looking at?
Look at, give us a total, um, just give us a total.
The motor grader and for the dump truck.
You got it over there, Pat?
Um, I don't know, but you guys have, I'm trying to do a lot of shot numbers.
Two sheets, right? Got, uh, two sheets, right?
Okay.
Well, this is a motor grader tire.
On, on this. Uh, what we're proposing is to buy six used rims to switch over the sledge truck. Up on the, this page right here.
I didn't have this page. I know this page.
Okay, on this page right here, what we're proposing for the, for the, for the trucks, is six used rims to take the tires off of the newest truck we bought and put them on the sledge truck. They're marginal tires, but they'll last. And that'll get us a set of tires that will allow us to run the sledge truck, and then when the sewer lagoon is done, that, we have a plan to use that truck elsewhere, but we don't need new tires on the truck that we're not gonna run that much. So we would like to put the new tires on the newest truck. And that would require six used rims for four fifty, and then we would need two of the steer tires, but just under that. There's steer tires for two pieces. Uh, Pink's was six seventy-two and Pomp's was five ninety-six. So, uh, 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 no, for, for the set. Yep. So those are two options, and then the drive tires are on the, under the line, under that, and there's different options and, and, uh, between tanks and pumps on those.
About twenty-three.
Yeah, about, that was, yeah, about twenty-three hundred dollars to put six new tires on the new truck, rotate those tires over to the sledge truck, and then the sledge truck for eliminating the ten hundred twenties that are getting extremely difficult to find.
That's two hundred dollars a piece.
I'll make a motion to.
Get the tires going, okay? Motion by James to get the tires going. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Isla seconds it. Uh, roll call vote, Bob.
Yes.
James.
Yep.
Larry.
Yes.
And Isla.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that gets that going, um. Then, um, I think that's our number one thing. Take a look at all the rest of that as we go. Let's, um, and we'll talk about more stuff as we go along, and we can try to do a budget comparison and some projection there where we can, where we know we are. So let's jump to that, um, next item, which is the police enforcement with the Knox County contract, and you have a contract suggestion in there. You have a contract that the county police had with Nyberg. And my understanding, and you guys can correct me if you want, but my understanding is that, uh, Bob, you and Larry both whatever, talked with Sheriff in reverse, that, with whatever, that. My understanding is that we asked the Village of Nyberg to send us over, Bob, you said that this was the starting point. Um, do you have anything that you had planned to make changes, or just, just kicking it out there?
Well, there's, there's a couple items that were, don't exactly, I don't know about the vehicle part of that. If you look in there somewhere, it says that they're gonna, we have a city office, which they need a city office here to run their department from, which makes sense, that's logical. We use ours, have used this office to do that before. The only thing, it was a little confusing, it was a vehicle, but, uh, we obviously have a vehicle. I think it is a read, and I didn't talk to him, but he much more about that, is that they would, uh, assume the maintenance of and use our vehicle until it came longer serviceable. I think that's how they read. But they would be responsible for the maintenance of that. We, out of the deal, as far as I can see, would give, uh, trained law enforcement officer provided through Knox County, and it'd be a Knox County Deputy Sheriff.
And we, and, and, and as I read that, there's absolutely nothing that guarantees how many hours or anything. So let me go one, if I can, now go from that. That's good, that's, that's kind of where you start. Now, I went to the courthouse on Friday to renew my license because it was the last day of the month, of course, and I procrastinated, waited for the last day to have been done. So the county commissioners happened to be in session. As I went up the stairs, I thought, hm, I'm gonna listen a little bit. So they were talking about their COVID policy. What were they gonna do? Because they've had four or five people in the courthouse that are down or have tested positive. So they were trying to decide a policy. So after I got my license, I went in and just sat down to listen to this. And so when they finished that discussion, then, um, Marty O'Connor said to the council, you know, if you don't do this, this is Cheryl Lawhead, Mayor, blah, blah, blah. And did you come to talk about the agenda item? And I said, no, I just dropped in. And he said, well, they just finished the agenda item with a discussion about the county providing our place of. So apparently, Mr. Henry put it on their agenda. He didn't say too much, didn't, it was over and nobody, I said, did anybody vote on anything? No, that, you know, didn't, whatever. So afterwards, I went to Mr. Henry's office to visit with him about it. And basically, when I said, I, you know, I looked at the contract and, you know, how many hours coverage we would get, and he said, whenever I decide somebody comes over there, I would take control. And I said, I would want some guarantee of some hours. And he said, you're not gonna get it, there's no wiggle room. So that was kind of his stance. Um, I need to tell you that we need to, at this point, please, um, I've got some good news because I have an interview Friday. I have two other nibbles on the line, so maybe we have a chance to get in our own company before we do anything with this. I avoided the supervisor this evening, saying to me, who would sign something that has no guarantee of hours? Right now, let me assure you that if there is an, is an emergency call, the county has to send an officer. We don't have to pay him to do it, they have to do it. The county is responsible to come to our aid in an emergency. They've already been to the school once. Now granted, we don't want that because when we want, it's like Doc Carlson said, when we need him in four minutes, it takes him forty minutes. So we need that onsite officer if we can get. So, um, without, you know, I don't, I don't have a whole lot of information, but, um, I've got a couple of prospects that sound pretty good, and Mike said one's coming Friday. So let's hang up on that. The economic development, we're, I'm still, I plan to have an invitation to, I've got a list of several, I'm gonna invite husbands and wives because Mike can tell you anytime you work on a committee, uh, for the city, your whole family's involved because you are working on things that you could be spending time with grandparents and wives and husbands and so forth. So, um, the, um, this is, this is something that's important to a community, is the economic development. And yet it can, um, it can seem like a pointless and a useless job when people look around and say, what are we really getting out of this? I have a meeting Wednesday with two ladies who are apparently very successful economic development directors in their town to kind of do what they do. Um, and then, uh, and I talked a little bit with Kelly, who is the Knox County Economic Development Director, and she tells me that I have to appoint somebody to be a representative of, and we wanna get that from the committee, um, to work with them. Uh, I've also been in touch with, um, Northeast on this rehab money, so we've got, have we had all three of them? We have one more, yeah. Yeah, we have, we have two bids in on the repurposing of some of that money and so forth, so. So that's coming along, so, um, we'll see what we, I'll keep you informed. The Crofton Baseball Association, I believe we probably did not get that on the pain, on the claims list.
He didn't get anything to me.
He sent an email to everybody.
Yeah, it's here. Yeah. It's, it's, um, it's just, um, it's just the usual two thousand dollars that we always pay them. It's always two thousand dollars every week.
Okay.
And, and that's what it is. It's, it's just fill in the amount. He sent the same contract. What it entails is that, basically, way back when, that whole thing about giving money to the city cannot give taxpayers dollars to anybody. And it doesn't matter whether it's nonprofit or private, that doesn't matter. You just can't give it to anybody. So, um, that contract, or that was, was worked up so that the city basically pays the baseball association to keep the, the mowing done in the infield and keep those grounds up. We still spend a lot of money down there. In the wintertime when it's clear, we, and we pay the electricity and we pay, you know, all of that. And that's okay. We just need, this agreement's been in place. I say two thousand dollars. Let's do what we've been doing. That's my thing. That's my recommendation. You have a lot of proof.
Do we have a motion on that?
Yes, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve that.
Okay, James made a motion to approve that contract with baseball association for one another year, stand on a yearly basis.
Awesome.
Seconded by Bob. Um, Isla.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
James.
Yep.
And Larry.
Yes.
Uh, as, we all got a letter from Craig the other day that said, um, as requested, here's the deal about your next audit, and I thought, oh, I didn't request that.
I did.
What, so what, what?
I called them and they left a question.
Good.
And, uh.
But it says it's worded the same way as all the rest of it.
As far as I know, we are, as far as I know, we're, we're allowed to say that.
Yep, yep. So, and, and so I sent him, um, I sent him a question and said, I am assuming that you want us to finish all the work with, with Eddie first, and he said, absolutely, but he said, what has happened? And I said, do we have to schedule through Mary? And he said, Mary's retiring, so I'll be doing most of that, so he said, we just wanna know. Okay? So, um, that's a, that's a yes, we need to sign off on that. Uh, because, okay, Bob has to sign that, yeah. So, yeah, we need to make a motion to accept him as our auditor, and then Bob will sign off on that.
I'll make a motion to accept Nebraska auditors or auditors twenty-twenty-one.
Yep. So James makes the motion, seconded by.
I'll second it.
By Isla. And the roll call vote is Bob.
Yes.
James and Larry and Isla.
Yeah.
Okay. So under the miscellaneous business, um, uh, the, uh, limit on the mayor's spending, and I'm gonna turn that over to you, that's something you guys have talked about, so what do you wanna do? And I think, uh, Mike might be involved in that. So.
Well, with, I don't know, did you send the same email to everyone else that you sent to me or did you?
Yeah, well, I, I'd sent out an email to those who asked, uh, and I was trying to get some further information as far as clarification as to what exactly, you know, how this would all, this would impact, uh, because I wasn't really under the understanding as to how, or how this would apply to, as much as you have some what is pre-approved plans, and I'm not sure that was an ordinance passed, I don't know how long ago that those things were.
Just a couple of years.
As to what those, what those were including. But you have under section one five oh nine, uh, section that says all claims against the city shall be presented to the city council in writing with the full account of the items. And this is a no claim or demand shall be audited or allowed unless presented as provided for in this section. No cost shall be recovered against the city in the action brought against it, and the unliquidated claim, which has not been presented to the city council to be audited. So when I got the information as far as setting a specific amount, then I went to look to this, look for a section where I thought, well, that would naturally fit in, dealing with what I initially understood. But when I looked at this, it appears that no claim can be submitted unless it's been submitted to the, to the city council, so it wouldn't even, it wouldn't even make any difference if it was fifty dollars, it would still have to be all of it. You know, the issue that I didn't understand was is, you know, dealing with the pre-approved claims that one has. I didn't know also whether or not, you know, some, um, some entities have, you know, they budget so much, I'll just say for, for maintenance or, or street repair, this or that, and once that budget for that amount has been set, then the person who's in charge of that department goes. in charge of that department goes ahead and authorizes those expenditures, but can't go beyond the amount that was budgeted to them. And I didn't know if that's how Crofton was set up in that regard. And, and so from that standpoint, I thought, well, at best, instead of wasting your time on me guessing about this or that, you know, kind of where it is, but I mean, it, you know, it kind of goes to the point that, you know, the city council's the one that makes the decisions, and, you know, regardless of what it is, it's involved. Even when I was on the school board, I, even as president of school board, I just couldn't go out and tell this person to do this, or order that, and that, without any authority. I'd be doing it on my own and being subject to whatever liability that that would, you know, involve. And so as opposed to try to draft something, I didn't know how it, how it would fit into this here, that's why I thought, well, I would much rather come to you and say, well, is this something, do you think that we need, and as to what aspect of it, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Follow the ordinance, I mean, what if we, I suggested is not valid, because it's already zero dollars, it's like, any expenditures have to be brought forth in written form for us to be approved before the meeting.
You know, and so, I don't know how that fits, I mean, you know, in any kind of a business situation, you have, you know, even when I was on the school board, I mean, you had, there were some expenditures that were made, you know, and then they'd still have to be approved, but you know, if you needed paper or pens or something like that, I mean, you're not gonna wait thirty days to get your pencils and pens, but there, that's the part that I was having difficulty is trying, I mean, I understand, you don't want the mayor, or anybody, either one of any of the people here going and committing the city to anything, but the taxpayers or the, or the merchants also need to understand that, you know, unless it's approved by the city, I don't care who, who went out and ordered the, you know, the merchandise, it still has to be approved by the city council in order for it to be paid.
I guess I'm having a problem with, in, in the past, we brought to the board certain things and we had to buy it, make a decision tonight, because it was the last one on the shelf. Now, I know better than that, and everybody in this room knows better than that. It ain't the only thing that's on the shelf, we don't even get time to do some research on it, we gotta make a decision tonight, because tomorrow it goes off sale. And that's what I'm upset about. I think we need to research these a little more, it's kind of just, Joe Blow over here has got something, it's the last one, and we gotta take, there's other, there's other people out there that handle certain things. I don't like to be, we gotta make a decision tonight, because it's gonna be gone, well, the sale's gonna be off, that's an old gimmick. And we see it all the time at Walmart or anyplace else. I just assume, bring it to the board, talk about it, and each of us know different areas where we can look at different spots. I don't like to get pressured on, we gotta buy from this guy, because he don't have no more left, and he promised this, and he promised, some of these deals were kind of made, I don't know, they said, yeah, I'll just get the board and get approved, just so, go ahead, I don't want to see that. I wanna see the board to see what you got, and the estimates, and then we decide, instead of people talking before the board even knows about it, that's what I don't wanna see.
So, to speak to that, we have documentation of somebody seeking out information about the purchase of a lawn equipment, and, and we have that in written in front of us, but we've not made any official motion or recognition of those purchases.
And they're getting estimates right away, I mean, what, we're not even making a motion that we're even gonna do that. It's just that, sometimes I think the cart is for the horse, and we're sitting here at a meeting tonight, and if we don't make a decision right now, we're the bad guys in the paper or whatever, I don't like that. I think the board needs to have some time to think about, it ain't gonna be the only one, it's never an emergency that we gotta do it right now, there isn't one.
I would like to explain, Mr. Stevens, that, that thing about the pre-approved, what that is.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful to me.
Okay, the pre-approved came about, oh, way back when I was on the council even. I think it's, what, what happens is that cities have their meetings on different dates, so for example, when, if we had a large payroll, and we're on that, Lisa and I were talking about that today, that on nine forty-one, when we pay your payroll taxes, you declare that you are on this pay schedule. If you have X amount of dollars in taxes that you have to pay, that you pay in a year or in the last three qualifying quarters, then, once we write that paycheck, we have withhold, withheld, say, two grand from people's paycheck, social security withholdings, et cetera. Then that has to be deposited in a federal deposit with the bank within so many days. And back in the day, when more payroll was being, that was established, that our deposits were made within three days of writing the checks. So, one of the things that you see on the estimates is the payroll. The other thing is, we're gonna make the payroll on certain dates, so we don't ask for approval of those payroll checks each time, or you'd be meeting twice a week. So that's, the payroll is paid on a pre-approved, the federal payroll tax is paid on a pre-approved, and those estimates kind of keeps us within where we usually pay. The same way with Nebraska withholdings, the Department of Labor, of course, is the unemployment tax, APLAX is the insurance that is part of the employee's withholdings or benefits, the Colonial Life is the same modern movement as the IRA, that's the retirement fund, the, now, water, the water bill is, when we get billed, we need to pay it, so we're not paying late charges on the water bill. And if we, like last month, delayed that month of bill, that bill's already due, passed through. So, these things have to be paid, so I think we, we had this before, and then Mr. McNally wrote up another resolution and made a list of those things that we could fill in, these are what have to be paid, so that we don't pay penalties. We know that we're gonna have them every month, so basically, it's taxes and utilities. So if you go down the line, you have the water, you have the sales tax, the public powers, the electric, one call concept, that's what we pay to get these readings, you know, what we're getting. Then they charge us to go out and do the markings, and we're getting hit really bad right now with all that REA going through, and they make us do all the reading, marking. Sun Life is another insurance, the LEAF is the lease for the copier, so we know we're gonna pay it every day, every, every month. EFC is our insurance, we cannot be late, Arts Garbage, another utility, Great Plains, and Black Hills, US Cellular, Telebeep is what they use, what the cop uses, and then that last one, see that last one, that's US Treasury, we just paid that. For your information, notice, it says, the fourth quarter twenty nineteen. And there was a whole lot of penalties on that, but it's paid, and that's the end of that big mess that we had in the twenty nineteen payroll, so.
Cheryl, those are the, those are the ones that I know we gotta pay, I'm not questioning it.
I, well, Ms. Jones.
I understand, what I'm talking about, I looked in here, and we got estimates on John Dearmore, we didn't even know we were buying a John Dearmore.
We didn't say we were buying it.
Who takes the time to do these estimates? Somebody has to take these kinds of new estimates. We didn't authorize a go look for a mower, or even talk about a mower. I don't think that we need to sit there and grasp things out of the sky, because I wanna have this, and we wanna have that, the board's gotta discuss something first, before we have estimates hours being, going on search on, on internet. I'm not, I'm not happy about that, I wanna know, if we're gonna talk about a mower, that's what we should talk about here, at what kind? That's what we should be talking about, not to get surprised when we come to a meeting.
What does it hurt to have information, Larry?
We don't even, our mowers are in good shape, what the heck, we just paid how many thousands of dollars, fix someone up?
Yeah, that's the problem, it's all, we just keep doing.
Cheryl, we're not paying money in this town, we're not paying money.
Okay, that's a discussion that we can have, but all we're doing is getting you information of what it would cost to replace.
But it takes man-hours to do that, too. Takes man-hours to have somebody write this all up.
Okay, well, if you're worried about the overtime hours, I'll tell you one thing, Mr. Patrick Hoopstein does a lot of work voluntarily from his house that he does not get paid for, so if that's your issue.
It's not.
That's kind of what you're saying, that we're paying when we shouldn't. It's information.
And I think it's a board's, I think it's a board's decision, if we're gonna think about a mower in two months or five months, it's our end of our season now, so we show you, we got a big project, we got the sewer project, and we got this coring on the streets, those are two major projects we gotta look at.
Well, and I have asked, let, let's just settle this in this way, I have asked the guys to keep an ever-updated equipment list that we could improve and know that we're gonna have to do these things. We can't run forever on broken-down equipment, and ten-year-old and twenty-year-old, they eventually wear out, and if we don't keep that, you don't go, we, we, we need to buy a new pickup once in a while, we need to buy a new car once in a while, I just paid off my car, it's five, right, five years old, I'm old enough, I don't plan to buy another one, but if I was a young person with a family, I'd be thinking, when am I gonna have to buy that new one? How many miles am I putting on it? How worn out is it? It doesn't hurt, does it, to just think about what we might have to have?
Can I just make a suggestion? You know, I think it'd be helpful to the council, as you've done with this, what do you call it again, the one-six plan, as it relates to your streets, you know, a lot of places have a capital outlay plan as well, where you list all your equipment, age, what the price is, you put on like this, and then that can be given to the council members.
Five hundred and four, and I can find that.
Well, then, you will always have that in front of you, so you know kind of where everybody's asking that, and then, you know, the council members could then also say, look, we've got this track, this tractor, this truck, or whatever it might be, you know, we got so many miles on it, we got so many hours on it, we got so many, how old of it is, so you know in advance of, just as with your streets, you can, you know, plan that.
And that's, that's kind of what we presented before, and this is just another.
I've said this before, how much would we stuck in to the pay order, or the, the dump trucks, or the pickup, we don't know how much money we're spending a month on repairs, we don't know that, I don't know that. They don't tell us a breakdown of how many, how much money we have stuck, and we have to put brakes in, and we have to put a rotor in, or if we have to put an axle in, we have no idea how much money is being spent on this equipment. We have no idea on each equipment, we should have a log, how much we sticking in, so we can decide.
It's the profit.
So we can decide, don't look at that profit clause, I don't know what the, the log, with them guys over there, they know how much they stick in, and they should write down, okay, the pay order took this much equipment, this much, so we can look at it and see how much money we're sticking in of this stuff.
It would help, obviously, in the budget process, especially with the capital outlay plan, you know, we're forecasting down the road, we're gonna be needing these massive, or these expenditures, we need bigger pieces of equipment.
And that's exactly what this is intended to do, is to do some looking at it. So, the next thing that you have listed is the Stephen Incorporated part purchase, so what did you wanna say about that?
Mr. Stephen, did you get a bill, and how much that part costs?
Yeah, I sent it to him.
What?
I gave it to him.
Did you guys receive the bill?
Came in over the weekend. It came in over the weekend, it was in a box.
I put it in the box Friday night. I dropped it in the drop box Friday night.
Is this the same part already on the mower?
Well, the, the part was the one that Larry brought here, and I said, we already had one ordered.
It's the same part that they put on?
And it went back over there, Larry took it back to them, that, when, when the one they ordered came in the next day, or whatever they looked at it, they said they didn't think it was the same part, and they couldn't guarantee the one he brought in anyway, so I had Patrick pick it up and take it back out to Jerry, so it's in Jerry's hands at this point. It's a hundred and some dollars, I remember it saying. Do you wanna do some thinking about that, that bill's actually not, would not be paid until next month anyway, will not be on the claims, anything comes in after the first, it's on the next month's claim, so if you wanna do some thinking about it.
Our next month's claim will be on the 10th.
Well, we can make a motion to approve it now, when it comes to do, we can pay it.
Yep.
Right, I can, I'll make a motion to pay it.
Okay, I wanna go back then, to what Mr. Stevens just said, that one individual can't go make the deals and expect to, to be paid by the council. We don't want me to do that, so you can go buy this hundred and some dollar part and say that's council's to pay.
It's kind of like the refrigerator thing, that we had an emergency refrigerator at the mall.
No, it wasn't, that was, this part was ordered from a different dealership, and was sent on, on the way, and the only way, reason it wasn't here was because of that, the truckers thing, and they delayed to get in here. So they knew it was being shipped, they had found the part.
They shot for it and told me it was back.
It was back ordered at the beginning.
Two months.
It was back ordered at the beginning, I don't, I'm not gonna try and argue the time date, I didn't write it down, but the fact is, that he went to the, picked up the old parts to match it up, and then took it over there, and I don't even know for sure where that came from yet, do you?
The third part?
Yeah, the, the part, Jared, where did you get that part?
Coming from New Holland here. You're not telling the whole story. This thing was broke down originally for two months, and they were told originally they weren't gonna get the part until the end of August. About a day before the end of August, I think Larry was told by somebody that that part is no longer available, can't get it, period. So I said, oh, let me go look.
We didn't tell him that.
They shot for it over there?
No, they did not.
It's being made. That's what they told us.
So that's where we need a, you know.
Well, what's really funny about this whole thing is, they said they couldn't find one, two months. I get on the phone and I call, I look at the part number and I'm thinking, hmm, that's New Holland or K-Site, been in this all my life. So I called the K-Site dealer and he said, that's basically New Holland built that tractor for, for, for us. I said, okay, he says, why don't you try New Holland? He said, they might have a warehouse where they keep some of this old stuff in there that you get. So I called Kletzke's in the Avent, less than two days, they called back, yes, we've got one coming, or we can get one if you get it. I said, Larry, what do you think? Well, they've been wanting that mower for two, two months, and they can't get it, so we went ahead and got the gear. About the time when we were told that they couldn't get the here, then Mr. Hoopstein calls me on the phone and says, we want a, a bid on a new mower, sixty inch, and I don't remember how many horses this and that, and I'm thinking, why would they be getting a bid on a new mower when it hasn't even been brought up before the council, which we're talking about tonight? Nothing was said. So I called Larry, and I think I called, what's his name, and I said, you guys talk about a new mower, it's not, it's news to us, we don't know anything about it. That was right after they were told they couldn't get that part. When I could get that part, then they could get the part. And that part, I'll tell you, is laying on my counter out there, and people are looking at it, and they're saying, what's the deal here? I'm telling them what the deal is, they say, that part looks like it's brand spanking new, I said, I know.
Is it?
Is the one they got brand new, it was made, it might not even have the hardness or anything else in it, that this is.
Is the one you got brand spanking new?
I think it is.
You think it is? And we were not going to have that work guaranteed unless they knew it was, and it was not in the package, it had no part number, and you had to get the older one to match it up, so I'm not gonna argue this, but the whole point is here, if I can say this, maybe this round circle of calling this guy and calling that guy, how about let's go through the office and or the maintenance people who work with this equipment, and stop degrading them by acting like they don't know anything? That's my piece, and I'm done.
I'm still making a motion to approve the pay that Jerry Stephens put a part that he got for our mower, which was not available at the time, and we had to give it.
And you should've gotten somebody to okay that.
Three, if you did, I got the same email from Mr. Pience, Mr. Murphy says, get that part, that's three, that's, we'll, let's vote, let's do it.
No, let's talk to Mr. Stevens and ask him if that's the same thing as approving that. No, let's talk to Mr. Stevens and ask him if that's the same thing as approving that.
Refrigerator, we need a refrigerator, so I called three council members, hey, do we, can we get a refrigerator?
No, I called you and said, go get a refrigerator. You didn't even have to go.
Can we go get it? Yeah, we got it.
If you are, if, this is what we're talking about, people, there has to be some kind of center that is able to keep the, the, the city running, if, you know, if, if we order envelopes, for example, we can't call three council people to see if we can order envelopes.
No, and we're not saying that, Cheryl, you're, you're a hundred percent right. There's just like, my, Mr. Stevens, the pencils, pens, day-to-day stuff we need, um, I guess. I, I don't know how long it took to get the part. I know the mower was down for a while.
And that whole argument about how many days does it?
It's irrelevant. It is what it is. We have, we have this part. I guess the way I would look at that is that we, I know it's not probably how everything should have worked out. We have the part, should we just buy the part if it breaks again, we'd have a part for it to go on until we get a new part.
I knew you had said that and I talked with Keith and he said when the part came in, he put, he said, I wish I'd have taken a picture, but the tape didn't line up, so he said, I don't think.
So it's not the same Keith then?
Probably not.
Okay, because that's what I was thinking, you know.
And for a hundred dollars, put it on the shelf.
Right, for a hundred dollars, put it on the shelf and if it breaks again, we have a spare till the new part comes in and we're not out of a mower for two months, is my.
And we can still put it on the part, on the shelf, it would never be, you know. But we need to have some communication once in a while.
Well, and I think we've come a long way as a council with that.
I agree.
Um, and we are going to have situations like this where we're gonna, it's just, we're just gonna stop. Um, but here's a situation, the part's bought, should we just buy it, put it on the shelf? If it happens to break next summer or the summer after, it could.
It won't last that long.
It may not.
That's why we're looking at mowers.
Right, and then if it doesn't, if it makes it a couple of months and it breaks, we can put it on till the new part. That's it. That's my key sense.
Yep.
If it's a new part, should they eliminate the setback then?
They will, but there's a restock fee, there's like.
Well, absolutely.
But that restock, we pay the restock fee for that we can. Pay the part, why not just send it back? Jerry, can you send it back?
I don't know, you got, there was, I think, eighteen or twenty dollars straight on the loan. So you're going to have that again, you're going to have a restocking fee on it.
What's a restock?
Why don't you find out what that is?
Could be fifteen, twenty percent.
Can you give that number for us, please?
I think that I almost, don't quote me, I think a hundred and eight bucks.
So that's what it said, get the restock fee plus the break and we'll find out.
I've had it long enough, I don't know whether I can send it back or not. I'll be honest, before I do that, I'd let it lay on the counter, it would be a good talking piece.
But why can't you just ask them if you can send it back?
I got an idea, I'll buy the car.
I was thinking the same thing.
Can I put it on my desk? I'd buy it, put it on my.
I'll put it on my, I'll buy it, I'll make a motion and I'll buy it.
You don't have to flip the car.
Okay.
So. And we can go third before us.
I'll buy, just take it out of my, take it out of my.
Hey, you don't. But you know, the point of it is.
But I get the part.
The point of it is this, if you're going to require one group to do your business one way, you got to include the other part to do the same business, right? If this is going to be a community action and you need to bring it here, you can't be doing parcels of this or that. You can't be doing this on your own, the council can't be doing it on their own, you got to have it in front of everybody. And so if it's a hundred and eight dollar lesson, then it's a damn good lesson.
Well, it's nice to agree that everything that, that, you know, the mayor does, everything needs to be brought to the council and we bring this to the council, this is where it's got to be decided before we go out and do any buying or any fixing.
I, I wish I knew what you, what you think I bought.
I didn't understand.
Okay, let's, let's adjourn.
I have, I have just one quick comment and I, nobody else has necessarily picked up on this, but I, I try not to be the guy that writes everything down and is a big pain in the butt for everybody, but it's my understanding that you, under no circumstances do you ever want to make phone calls to get a straw poll about what you can and can't do at a meeting. The same as you shouldn't be sending emails to each other asking if things are okay or not. And you shouldn't call around asking what we can or can't do, or if we'll support something or not support something. That, I would encourage you to make that business in the meeting and not, because you're just going to make me suspicious and then when I'm suspicious, I do a lot more homework than I need to do.
The open meeting violation.
Well, I just, you can, you can make it whatever you want. I would very much encourage you not to attempt to make decisions by email or phone call in any situation. Just throwing that out there as a nice comment for everybody to pay attention to.
And we get from the League of Municipalities, they send out volumes of emails, it gets old checking them. But it's like, somebody will ask a question, how does your town answer this? And every one of them, they'll say, be careful about answering this and ball.
You can send me whatever emails you want. It's the responses and the, and the agreements that happen, not here, that I'm concerned about.
Be careful if your whole council answers this and you. So, um, does that conclude everything?
We got one more, time of, uh, future budget meeting, uh, starting in May.
Oh, okay. So what do you have in mind? Because.
I think, I think what we need to do is in May, you know, and, and start a meeting earlier at the, end of the meeting with the budget starting figures in May, so we got some kind of a heads up instead of the last week that it's got to get done. We can figure out in May what we have spent and every month we can kind of look at as a board, as a board, not, not just yourself because you do a lot of work. I understand you do a lot of work, but a board has to be agreeable to what we're doing here and not just at the last minute we're getting into punch time.
Okay, the, the, um, league puts out a calendar that says that each department needs to, and this is the thing too, that we're not a big enough thing, that we have twenty different departments that submit budgets. But the guys have done this with the equipment list, with this, with this, with this. We've tried to, you've got, you've got financial statements every month to tell you what, where we are, what we've spent, what's left in each fund. Those, those, um, the profit and loss by fund, if you look at those, those tell you exactly what came in and what went out of each fund. So it's not the big thing that I gave you at the budget time, which I shortened so that you could go through it. But every month you get this, what came in this highway fund, what went out of the highway fund. And if you look at them closely, it'll leave them saying that it was repair worker, it was gas or whatever. So everything you've asked for is in.
Knowledge, knowledge is a thing. Each month you can sit down with them and say, okay, this is where we're sitting, profit and loss in our budget if we're over a hundred.
I can give you that.
And as a board, each month that we kind of, kind of get a grasp on this instead of the last month. That's what I'm upset about. I just assume start in May so we got some kind of a records of where we're going to be going.
I can give you that, that there's.
I mean, it has a board at a meeting.
I can go through the pro, the, the financials every month. They're hand to you, I, I would hope that you are looking at them before you get here and if you have questions, bring it. But I am happy to approve as, as part of the meeting and we can.
I've asked, I've asked questions and, and you go through the whole forty-eight pages and.
Well, what, I'm trying to.
I made it simple, Cheryl. Each month, although how much you spend, each month, it should tell us what we got to spend and where we're at. It's not twenty-eight pages every, every time we come to a meeting.
But basically you want a summary.
What?
Basically you'd like to have a summary.
Summary of the month, each month at a meeting and then we understand what's going on.
And then if you have a question.
We can go through this. You run it every day, you sit in that office every day and I know you.
Okay. If you want, if you want detail or if you want summary, so go out and sit down and figure that out. I'll make two or three different ones and see which one is better.
We can start in May, we don't have to do it all at the end.
We're going to have to do it at the end to ask any city and you've got a budget season and everybody's pulling their hair out. So that's just part of it. I'm ready for adjournment, how about everybody else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Seconded by Larry, roll call vote is Ayla.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, James?
Yep.
And Larry.